Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the last Post Falls City Council meeting for 2023. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. Present? Presents? I'm thinking of Christmas, I guess. Present. We do have one announcement. City Hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, December 25th in observance of Christmas and Monday, January 1st in observance of New Year's. And I do have a few appointments. So council, I would like confirmation for the following. I'd like to request confirmation to appoint Pat Lefell to the Urban Renewal Commission. And just so council knows, Jerry Balzella served, I think, for approximately 15 years and his term is ending. And I'd like to appoint Pat to fill that position. I would like to also request confirmation for the reappointment of Lynn Crosby and Eric Clemenson to the Urban Renewal Commission. I'd like to request approval for the reappointment of Vicky Jo Carey and Ross Shlottower to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to request council confirmation for the approval of Bobby Wilhelm to the Planning and Zoning Commission and request reappointment of Kristin O'Yage to the Park and Recreation Commission.
Do you make a motion?
Yep.
I move to approve all of them and welcome them to and thank them in advance for the work that they're going to do on behalf of the city. So that's my motion.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all for being willing to step up. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? With that, we will enter into the consent calendar. Please present, Shelley.
Item A is minutes from the December 5th, 2023 city council meeting. IMB's payables, November 28th through December 11th, 2023. Item C is purchase of 1/20/24 John Deere 320P Tier Backhoe Parks Cemetery Replacement. Item D is Millsap Annexation Grant of Right-of-Way File Number ANNX-22-16. Item E is Millsap Annexation Grant of Easement File Number ANNX-22-16. Item F is Bogey Annexation Grant of Right-of-Way File Number ANNX-23-2. Item G is Bogey Annexation Grant of Easement File Number ANNX-23-2. Item H is purchase of a 2023 Chevy 6500 Dump Body Truck Parks Construction Replacement. Item I is Diatley Annexation Reason Decision File Number ANNX-23-1. Item J is Acceptance of Sue or Easement from Pine and Poppy. Item K is Millsap Landing Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item L is Bogey Annexation Reason Decision File Number ANNX-23-2. Item M is Water Reclamation Facility Tertiary Treatment Project Request for an Increase of Contract Amount with Panhandle Area Council. Item N is Purchase Playground Equipment for Woodbridge Park. Item O is Housing Company Zone Change Reason Decision File Number ZC-23-1. Item P is Diatley Grant of Easement West Salt East Way ANNX-23-1. And item Q is Diatley Grant of Easement North Pleasantview Road ANNX-23-1.
Questions on the consent calendar?
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up tonight is public hearings, and we have none, followed by action items, unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions, and we have a plethora. The first ordinance is Millsap Landing.
I move to place the ordinance Millsap Landing File Number ANNX-22-16 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Haraldin.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho annexing property consisting of approximately 4.88 acres, a parcel of land being the west half of tract 54, block 25 of the plat of Post Falls Irrigated Tracks, as recorded in Book C, pages 78 through 80, records of Cootney County, Idaho, lying in the southwest quarter of Section 25, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, providing for an amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
I move to approve the ordinance Millsap Landing Annexation File Number ANNX-22-16 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next ordinance is the Bogey Annexation.
I move to place the ordinance Bogey Annexation File Number ANNX-23-2 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Motion passes. Field.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho annexing property consisting of approximately 5.179 acres, a parcel of land being the west half of tract 43 of the plat of Post Falls Irrigated Tracks filed in Book C of Platts at page 78, records of Cootney County and a portion of the Bogey Drive right-of-way lying in the southwest corner of Section 25, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
I move to approve the ordinance Bogey Annexation File Number ANNX-23-2 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next ordinance is Housing Company Zone Change.
I move to place the ordinance Housing Company Zone Change File Number ZC-23-1 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Roll call.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for a change in zoning classification for the land described in Section 1 of this ordinance from a mix of medium-density residential R2 and community commercial service, RCCS, to the Smart Code 5 SC5 zoning district, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect the change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve the ordinance Housing Company Zone Change File Number ZC-23-1 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next ordinance is the wastewater update.
I move to place the ordinance wastewater update 13.20 on its first and only reading by title only and while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending municipal code sections 13.20.140 and 13.20.230 to require immediate notification of discharges of regulated substances into the wastewater stream and requiring that wastewater discharge permits contain effluent limits and a waiver process, providing that the remaining sections of Post Falls Municipal Code shall remain in effect, providing for severability, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I move to approve the ordinance wastewater update 13.20 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next ordinance is the Diatley Annexation.
I move to place the ordinance Diatley Annexation File Number ANNX-23-1 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho annexing property consisting of approximately 5.826 acres, a parcel of land being a portion of tracks 21 and 22, Green Acres Plat Number 10, according to the plat recorded in the office of the Cootney County Recorder and Book of Plats, page 100, Cootney County, Idaho official records, together with a portion of the southwest quarter of Section 32, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, as described in the deed to the state of Idaho, recorded October 17th, 1938, in Book 110 of deeds at pages 151 and 152, records of Cootney County, Idaho, together with a portion of said southwest quarter of Section 32 and the northwest quarter of Section 5, Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, according to the record of survey recorded in Book 19 at page 234, Cootney County, Idaho, providing for an amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
I move to approve the ordinance Diatley Annexation File Number ANNX-23-1 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is Comprehensive Plan Resolution. Just resolution, right?
Is someone?
Yeah, there's no presentation on this item. It's just a motion. It was already approved.
Okay. I move to approve resolution title Comprehensive Plan Resolution CPA-23-1 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And the final item under unfinished business is the contract amendment with JUB Engineers for the water reclamation facility master plan.
Here's where the presentation is.
Here's where the presentation is. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council. Craig Bornpole, Utilities Manager for the city. And the first item I'll be speaking with you tonight is a proposed contract amendment with JUB Engineers to extend the contract timeframe for our water reclamation facility plan or master plan. A bit of history on the facility plan. We began this effort in the summer of 2022. Initial efforts through 2022 were really focused on the technical aspects of the water reclamation facility, defining design points for the 20-year lifespan of the facility plan. And we brought to you, we had a workshop on some of those technical elements in 2022. Work this year has been focused on the capital improvement plan, when those expenses may hit, how we plan to pay for them. We're also looking at impact fee methodology and rate setting has also been worked on in this year. So we added several alternative scope items to the original contract with JUB throughout this year. In March, we added the impact fee methodology. In August, an influence pipeline study where we're really looking at the pipelines coming into the facility. That's really where our collection system master plan and this one combined. And in November, we had an alternative rate study to this facility plan, really trying to get a comprehensive overview of where everything sits for the water reclamation facility. So options for council adoption. With these new items, we realized that it kind of put us in this weird timeframe of when we'd be bringing it to council for adoption. One option was to try and rush these items, bring it for adoption likely at this council meeting. Another option we discussed was extending this into 2024. And really with that, we saw an opportunity to bring the new council members onboard and build consensus of the recommendations in the facility plan because there'll be a lot of those items coming forth over the next four or five years, the projects coming forth. And so that seemed a preferable alternative is to extend this contract and build consensus on the council in 2024. Extending the project into 24 does have some budget impacts. We worked with our consultant JUB Engineers on if we were to do that, what would be the items that they would need to interface and what would be the cost to doing that. So the financials of the proposed amendment would be adding for the consulting services $36,290. And then we also talked about an optional public open house. And if we see the need or the next council sees the need for more outreach to the public, what would that take in JUB's efforts to set that up, host that, incorporate any comments or at least evaluate any comments we get during that public open house into the final document? So there is an optional and it's a time of materials not to exceed of $17,330 was their estimate. It'd be funded through the same budgets that the, you know, our ongoing facility plan is, budget line items listed there. So with that, I'll take any questions on the proposed.
So you're asking for approval for the full amount, but understanding that $17,000 is optional at this point?
Correct. Yep.
Any questions for council?
I think with the scope you've added to the facility plan, I think it's better to spend a little more time and effort upfront to prevent problems on the back end. Those usually get really expensive. So I think slow play in this one. I know you guys have thrown a lot at it in the last year, so let's make sure we do it right.
I will say, as part of that, we're going to have a workshop out at the facility plan. There can be a lot of new faces who have not had the opportunity to tour our facility plan, especially with the new tertiary treatment coming online. We see that as a really good opportunity to bring all the council through the water reclamation facility and again, show the work that we do out there as part of this effort.
I've moved to approve the contract amendment with JUB Engineers for the water reclamation facility master plan.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chauv?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Before we get into new business, I want to go back to announcements, appointments. Hopefully I could do that. I was going to have Field make an introduction for us and I, five minutes before the meeting started, I said I would do it and then I forgot. So Field, would you like to introduce our new?
Yeah, so I've, we've hired a new deputy city attorney, so Chris Gabbert is joining the legal staff. He will be handling most of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but feel free to reach out to him and with your questions and.
And you come with experience in municipal law.
Absolutely.
So welcome. Wanted everybody to meet you. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Now we get down to new business. The first item is resolution adopting outside agency funding, representation, and fund balance policies.
Good evening, Mayor and council. You have those policies in your packet tonight. I don't have a presentation. I can pull up just a short PowerPoint if you want to see it, or I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about each of the policies. Generically, these are aimed at, in the instance of the outside agency funding, we want to make sure that when we get a request from a nonprofit or from an outside agency for funding that they have a public purpose, that that purpose is going to provide a benefit to the city and that it's not competing and taking away dollars from other critical projects that we have. And so we want to make sure that those projects compete with the other budget requests during our normal budgeting process. We've built in, we want to make sure that we have a periodic review of those funding requests to make sure that we're still getting value for the money that we're investing. On the outside agency representation, we've never really had a clear delineation of whose job it is to appoint who when we have requests to have technical staff or elected representatives sitting on outside agencies. And so we've kind of done it catch as catch can, and so we wanted to make sure that that was explicit. The idea here is generically that the city administrator, when there's a request for a staff technical person, will make that appointment. It's part of that employee's duties to go prepared, to represent this position of the city, not their personal positions. They're not receiving additional compensation for that. When it's an elected official, generically, that would normally be the mayor. But the mayor often will ask a city council member to slide into that role. And so in that instance, because the council can only act as a group, not as an individual, the role of that council member is to represent the adopted city's position and in place of the mayor. If there's not an adopted position, that council member is certainly free to bring it back to the full council, have a discussion, figure out what the policy should be that then is represented at the next board meeting. That's that policy. The last one is frankly, just a quick adjustment to our fund balance and rollover policies. It's mostly the same as what we currently have, but we did change some of the allocation for any unfunded or unexpended general fund dollars at the end of a fiscal year. Instead of rolling that all into our vehicle replacement account, we're now talking about putting half of it in vehicle replacement, half of it in our facilities plan so that we're starting to build a nest egg to pay for future expenditures for facilities. That's the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
One question I had, and I don't know if I misread or what, but on the Panhandle Area Council appointee, is that not Jerry Lyons representing us?
He is.
And there was a different name in there, so not.
And that's not part of the official policy. I pulled that off of their website, so their website may have been incorrect.
Okay.
We do want to keep track and have a list of these appointments and the agencies that we're funding. We don't anticipate that that's ever going to be 100% accurate, but we want to keep it up to date so that we have a list somewhere.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we had our correct person on there.
Yeah, I will make sure that that gets adjusted on the list.
Any other questions, Warren?
Well, just for clarity for those in the audience watching, so the outside agency funding and the representation, those are policies that didn't really formally exist before, right?
They did not. Not formally. There was a sort of a policy for outside agency funding, but it really was in the form of an application. And that was, we had an application.
Yeah, so this is, I think, a giant leap for mankind to have these policies formalized, so I appreciate you guys putting the time in for that.
And I think it's important too, and you mentioned it, Warren, on representation. We all can have our own feelings, but representing the city, it's, you're representing the city's position and we just, as Warren says, if there's ever a conflict or questions, come back, discuss it at council and go forward. So I think it's important to have that in the policy. Okay? No motion required on this, Warren, or?
We do need a motion.
A motion?
I've moved to approve the resolution adopting outside agency funding, representation, and fund balance policies.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is I-90 State Highway 41 Interchange Project. Water main insertion valves. I should put my glasses.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. So for the past 14 months, I-90 Highway 41 interchange has been under construction and ITD's contractor is now entering stage four of that construction process. Stage four of that project involves relocating utilities along State Highway 41 north of I-90 and will also include doing some of the water work that the city of Post Falls has paid ITD to have their contractor construct. Tonight's staff is going to be requesting for city council approval to authorize ITD's staff to negotiate a change order with the contractor to install two insertion valves at a cost of $101,421.55. Back in the fall of 2022, ITD got advanced funding and started construction of the interchange. In June of 2023, earlier this year, we entered into a cooperative construction agreement with ITD. Typically, ITD would have that cooperative construction agreement done with the city prior to the start of construction. This happened a little bit later. All of our work was covered. The city's participation in with cooperative construction agreement was a little over $1.1 million. Most of that work involved around street impact fees at just under $500,000, which was mainly signalization at Mullen and State Highway 41. And the other larger portion was water work at $650,000. For that $650,000, we're putting in a casing underneath I-90 at the current location where Highway 41 passes. When work is done on the I-90 interchange, that area is going to be buried underneath dirt and we need to have a location to put a future water line, either larger size or to be able to replace the water line that we have there since we won't be able to dig up I-90 and fix it. We're also relocating with a new 12-inch water main along Highway 41 to get it out of the way of ITD's improvements. And the area that we have in question tonight is in the location of Mullen Avenue and Highway 41. We need to adjust the main to get out of the way of stormwater and other utilities that ITD has going in place. Now with the cooperative construction agreement, ITD has agreed to work with the city on anything that could modify the amount of cost that the city would incur prior to issuing a change order. And the city's agreement is that if we get a bill for those additional costs, that we would pay it. Because of the amount that we're asking tonight of a little over $100,000, it's beyond what we had for contingency, so we're asking for that approval of that additional funding. To give you a little bit more details to what we're doing, this is the intersection of Highway 41 and Mullen Avenue. And in that location, they need to replace and adjust the location of the water main. The problem is that Mullen Avenue is the main feed to get to the Highlands Reservoirs. If we cut that line in that location, our nearest control valve heading to the west is Greens Ferry Road and there is a valve on the Highway 41 line, which is a 12-inch line, but it essentially isolates the Highlands and also isolates a good portion of the area south of Mullen Avenue and east of Highway 41. We're able to backfeed some of those areas, but it does increase some of the risk of not being able to provide enough water for fire flow. And up in the Highlands area, it starts a clock in that they are limited as to how much water is up there in those reservoirs. We can't refill them, and so we have to get the water or the work done before they run out of water on top. One of the biggest items that's going to take up time while this work is being done to modify the water line in Mullen Avenue is when you open it up, we have over a million gallons of water to deal with. We have to dispose of it in a location where we're not flooding adjoining businesses and with over a million gallons, be able to get it out of the way fast enough so that we can get everything put back together, sanitized, and get the reservoirs back online. Our water department feels that 24 hours should be sufficient for that, but that's a long time to be relying upon your water line being down. An alternative that came up in our discussions between ITD, the contractor, the city's water department, and the city's engineering develop is to put in a couple isolation valves on either side of Highway 41, an 18-inch on the east side, a 16-inch on the west side. An insertion valve can be put into the water line while it is still in operation. It takes about four hours to do, but while they're doing it, it then leaves us with a product. We're still able to provide water to our customers while those valves are going in. And then once those valves are in, we can isolate areas without having to deal with that additional million-to-million-and-a-half gallons of water and wondering what to do with that, which gives us extra time for that contractor to do the work of putting in the new line and reduces the risk of low fire flow or not having enough water up in the Highlands. The closer we get to. The closer we get to summer irrigation time, that 24-hour window seems to be, becomes a lot smaller, just even though we will be letting people know to conserve water. So again, an insertion valve can typically be put in in less than six hours. The manufacturer says it takes about four hours. It's not something that is locally available as far as resources to be done. Most of the companies that do it are located on either of the coasts of the U.S. There is a company out of Billings, Montana, that is available, and they were also the lowest estimated bid that the contractor got to us. And right now, they do appear to have availability for March and April of this year to do the work. ITD would provide some of the additional costs, which would be for additional excavation, shoring, and traffic control while those insertion valves are put in place. We are again requesting that you authorize staff to have ITD have their contractor acquire those two insertion valves and the work for that work to be done. This item has been coordinated between the engineering department, Public Works Water, ITD, and Scarsell, who is the contractor for ITD. We do have an existing contingency for this project. It's much lower than the $101,000, but we would also like to keep that in case something else comes up somewhere else in the project. And there is the possibility of cost reductions. If we can get a notice to the contractor to order those valves now, we will also request for them to remove two other valves that we have in there, which would be put in, as you say, the typical way that we do it, which would have everything shut off for a while. And we could have those returned and not purchased, and that would save about $25,000. I stand for any questions you might have. This is a little bit confusing and technical.
So the return of those valves that would not be needed, $25,000, so the net would be 75, 76, but you're asking for approval for the full $101 at this point?
Correct. And we would work out with, we, ITD would not be looking for payment until March or April of this year, about the same time that the valves would be going in. And that would give us enough time that we would know how much actually needs to be paid to ITD. So if we get that $25,000 back, then we'll actually only utilize 70, 75,000.
Questions, comments?
It makes good sense. Always good to have backups.
I think we shouldn't leave anybody without water. That's a pretty big risk. And we end up with a better system for not much cost out of the salt's pocket, anyway.
And again, Counselor Malloy, with those insertion valves in place, we will still have a period of time that we will have to shut off people with water, but the number of people will be great, a lot less, and the length of time should be a lot less as well.
Want to make a motion?
I would move to approve the I-90 State Highway 41 Interchange Project AO2-442 Water Main Insertion Valve.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Most passes. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Next item up tonight is a request to hunt on land, the land application property. Craig, you're pitch hitting, correct?
Correct. Pitch hitting for Public Works Director John Beecham. I have reviewed the slides twice, so hopefully I can adequately cover the topic. I am pitch hitting because the request was for hunting on the land application property, which is currently owned by the Water Reclamation Division and slated for wastewater reuse in the future when needed. If questions come up about discussions that were had at the department head level, I'll probably hand those off to Warren, who was a party to those discussions. But I'll at least kick this off, and we'll see where the discussion goes. So fundamentally, the city did receive a request to hunt geese on city-owned property, our land application property. And because it was that property, it was routed through Public Works for evaluation. The initial request was denied at the staff level. This is consistent with requests that we've received over the last several years on the property, especially since it was annexed in and officially part of the, within the city boundary. And so that is consistent with city code and past requests. The request came back from the original quester to if we needed to change some of those codes, what would be the process to do that? What's the next level? Who could I speak with on getting authorization to do this? So staff discussed at the department head level, came up with a consensus that they felt it is still consistent and would recommend not moving forward with allowing for hunting on the property, but would bring it forth to council seeking direction on that policy if you agree with that recommendation or would like to see some of the challenges to hunting on the property addressed and opening the door for that. Some of the staff concerns that it is city-owned property. We hold leases with farmers on all of our property out there. They're continuing to farm those parcels as they have done for sometimes generations with some of them. And we don't have the ability right now to allow third-party access onto that property. So to allow that, we would have to renegotiate some of those leases to include that and address any other concerns that the farmers may have with the request. Coupled with that is safety. City code currently does not allow for discharge of firearms within city limits. So that city code would have to be altered. There is an allowance in that code. My understanding is that is generally planned for things like a shooting range or target ranges for possibly the police, et cetera, designed for that rather than just open hunting. And then there were concerns about general management of hunting out there, administration, noise concerns, possibility exists of having to alter the noise ordinance to allow for discharge of firearms, liability, and general safety. This graphic here, I think it shows up. These are some of the parcels that we are talking about. And in, the purple parcels are the land application parcels. The hatched area is a 300-yard setback from rights-of-way, railroad right-of-way, road right-of-way, or buildings. And the 300 yards was arrived at in discussions about how far a birdshot from a shotgun may travel. And so we're trying to identify, would there be any areas where, you know, the possibility of it being safe to discharge a shotgun without reaching right-of-way or buildings would exist? The graphics do show that there are some areas on the interior of the parcels that would meet that setback. Would we want to pursue it further? Again, getting back to some of the required elements, if we did want to pursue a request to hunt on city-owned property, it would require amending the leases that we hold with the farmers out there, addressing the prohibition on shooting and perhaps noise, and developing a management plan for that. So discussion, recommendation. Really, the request from council is a policy direction on if we should maintain the prohibition, as was recommended by staff, for prohibition of discharging firearms within city limits or seek to address some of the concerns and other issues that would need to be addressed to allow it.
Well, this has come before us before, and council has been fairly, has been not fairly, has been consistent on their position. But I entertain council's comments or thoughts on it.
I think that there's a lot of things going on there. But the fact that that's city property, but it is leased to farmers to farm, it's just not a straightforward thing. I just can't even imagine having to go back and redo the leases to allow and then enforcement. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I can't see where any part of that makes sense to do anything other than what we're doing, and that's not discharging.
Anything else?
Weapons in the city limits.
I looked it up today. There's over 360,000 acres of public land in Cootney County alone where hunting is largely permitted. That's 43% of the entire landmass of the county. So there's plenty of opportunity to, for hunting in the county not far away. I understand that in the days of yore, most of us have lived here our entire lives. You know, there was a lot of hunting that went on in the prairie, mostly on private land. But the city has since grown out there. And I think to try to manage that, to keep a 300-yard buffer between the hunter and any structures, that's going to change as things get built. So you've got to change signage. You've got to have somebody enforce it, which I'm sure Chief isn't too excited about doing. And it's, I, it seems like a whole lot of potential liability and risk when there's 360,000-plus other acres within minutes' drive that can be utilized for that purpose. So I would vote to go with staff's recommendation.
You want to shoot it, though?
What's that?
You said you wanted to kill it?
Yeah. I want to shoot it now.
Any comments?
I just think the management would be impossible. I just don't see any way you could manage it with the different leaseholders. Enforcement would be a problem. I just don't see any way to manage it.
I just picture farmers out there driving their combines, ducking. That just doesn't make sense, but that's me.
And also too, as time goes on, we start putting in more utilities and facilities for the land application purpose of that. You know, I don't think we want your team or John Beecham's team out there trying to dig well, you know, dig wells and pipes and everything else with the shot going off over their head. Not that that would happen, but it's just another factor to be dealt with. When again, there's, there's plenty of, and I'm a hunter, so I understand the desire to have more hunting territory, particularly close. But I agree with staff on this one.
Yeah, I agree with everyone here. I think, you know, just like Joe was saying, I'm a hunter too. And it's compelling when you drive by a field and you see it full of geese of like, how can I figure out how I'm going to get out there and get one of them buggers? Because you see them. And I remember seeing a bunch of elk on the same prairie all the time, thinking, okay, how can I get out there? But I think, you know, as everyone has commented, the safety aspect of it is probably the biggest issue to me alongside the lease agreements and just enforcement. It's just, it's just a little too much. But I empathize with those that are advocating for it.
Entertained a motion?
I would move to deny their request to hunt on land application property.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Most passes. Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Next up is the 2024 Water Distribution Project Design Contract with Century West.
Oh, look at you.
Good evening again, Mayor, Members of the Council. Craig Bornpole, I think this is three of six items that I have. So you're going to be tired of me by the end, but we'll try and keep them as short as we can. Next up for me is a 2024 Water Distribution Contract with Century West. Our 2018 master plan recommended implementing a formal pipeline replacement program on our drinking water system. In general, we have what I'll define as a pretty tight system. It's not wildly old. You know, a lot of PVC pipe. It's a pretty good system, but it will age out. And the plan recommended a 1% should be planned on annually for pipe replacement. It really focused on infrastructure that is getting to that upper end of age, condition, or operational difficulties. So moving forward with that recommendation, staff evaluated. This graphic shows the pipe age throughout the system. I understand it's pretty small. I'm not asking you to evaluate it right now, but just give you an idea of the different ages of pipe throughout the system. And this graphic here shows potential for some fire flow deficiencies throughout the system. So combining these and evaluating it, we identified an area, we're calling it the Westwood area, for a 2024 pipeline replacement project. The presented contract, oh, you're focusing in a little bit more. So the Westwood area is generally near Ponderosa Elementary School and just north of the lift station project that you're going to hear a staff presentation on later that was just completed. So financials for this contract, the engineering, design, and bidding support is listed for $100,000. We're asking for a 10% contingency. If items come up during design or surveying work, and it would be funded through the distribution system design budget with the associated budget code. Next steps, if this is approved, there will be engineering design through this winter with a goal of project bid and award in spring of 2024. And hopefully we'll have an idea of if we can do some of that construction in 2024. It's a lot of pipe, which is getting more and more available, so we're hopeful that this work can get done next year if we can get moving on it.
Any questions for Craig?
I think I asked this question five years ago when this came up. I can't remember the answer, but you know, 1% of the year, 1% of the system a year seems awfully conservative if it's a 100-year cycle. The life cycle of the, most of the system is not that long. So what's the contingency to make sure everything stays up and going?
We're relying quite often when we do any distribution project, we're re-upping our model, which shows flow velocities and demands in the different area. And that allows us to get a good snapshot of where things sit. And if we need to be more aggressive in our replacement, we're going to have that, have that known ahead of time. The 1% oddly is, gets to be very, very expensive. And trying to predict where the number came from, even at only a 1% replacement, we're well over $1 million a year to be set aside for pipeline replacement. And so you start recommending more than that. The numbers can get very, very big quickly. So we're trying to rely on, start with that as a first benchmark, but rely on the boots on the ground to say, are we hitting what we need to? Are there really some areas that we need to be more aggressive in replacing? Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
It's not a limit. It's just a kind of a minimum.
Correct.
I would move to approve the 2024 Water Distribution Project Design Contract with Century West.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Next up is the Landmark Place Annexation Agreement.
Good evening. I'm still not John Beecham. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
He was, he was sick. He had a bunch of presentations tonight.
We're doing things a little bit differently tonight. This annexation agreement has been out there for some time. And so given that, we wanted to make sure that we had a chance for you to discuss it rather than throwing it on the consent calendar. It also happens to line up nicely with a purchase and sale agreement that we're trying to work out with the same owner and we've been negotiating at the same time. So I'm going to present both of those at one time and happy to answer any of your questions as we go through this. So the Landmark Place Annexation Agreement, it was approved for annexation with R1 zoning on approximately 11 acres back in 2019. It's located between the freeway and the Centennial Trail near Maguire Road. It was delayed largely because they need to extend a water line underneath the freeway and that takes some time to design. I will note that this, under our current process, how we do annexation agreements today, this would have been done years ago because we're, we're doing those agreements before we bring the annexation to council. So this situation wouldn't come up again, but this is sort of the last straggler we had from a prior process. So we had more, more or less completed the annexation agreement years ago while they worked on trying to figure out their permissions to get a water line under the freeway. So tonight we have the annexation agreement. We will bring the ordinance and the right-of-way easement dedications to you probably at the next meeting. We just couldn't get them across the goal line. I believe we got those today, just a little bit too late to get them on the agenda for tonight. So showing you where this is at, as you can see, it's right adjacent to Maguire Road. It's sandwiched between the freeway and the Centennial Trail. If you look right, let me see if I can get my pointer over here. Right here is the property we're going to talk to you in just a minute about purchasing. So the annexation agreement, like all of our annexation agreements, essentially requires them to dedicate the necessary rights-of-way and easements so that we can serve it. They're going to end up having to go through a subdivision process for this. Some of the changes that we had in the agreement that we pulled out, we had them granting us easements to serve the property across the parcel that we're going to talk about just in a minute. But we've been able to negotiate a purchase of that property, which I think puts us in good stead. So I'm going to switch to that one really quick. We are working at, we have a purchase and sale agreement negotiated to acquire the, essentially the half acre parcel that's at 1661 West Lundie Boulevard. And we'll jump to that in just a second. It currently has across that parcel, our sewer outfall pipeline goes across that parcel. There's a sewer main that goes across that parcel. We also will need, if, if this wasn't to move forward, we would need to acquire an additional easement across that parcel so that we could extend our water reuse pipeline under the river over to the, to the community forest property. Where that ran into reality was that the owner had a desire to build a home on this lot, which would have really impinged on our ability to make sure that we had the ability to serve and deal with our wastewater. So we worked on an agreement with them where we would purchase the property for $165,000. The current assessed value is about $247,000. I should note that they will retain an easement across the property for a private drive that would provide them a secondary access to their planned subdivision. But other than that, it would be ours and we wouldn't be as constrained and worried about our ability in the long term to maintain those, those sewer lines that go through there. So pointing out quickly, showed you the bigger view, so this is the parcel here that we're talking about acquiring. We recently, a year or so ago, acquired this parcel so that we would have a continuous connection from the freeway, from the, from the plant to the freeway, under the freeway, down to the river, so that we would always have the ability to deal with our outfall and our land application line. So that's kind of it. The approval of the purchase and sale agreement would authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement. We still have outstanding a final Exhibit B depicting the location of the, the retained easement for the private drive. We know what that's going to look like, but their engineer, again, was trying to dial in that final design of that. We expect that shortly, so contingent upon receiving that, when we receive that, the mayor would sign the purchase and sale agreement and would move forward to, to closing. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So Warren tonight, it's two items. The first was the Water Distribution Project Design Contract.
So the first one would be the approval of the annexation agreement. And then the second would be approval of the Rose of Sharon Purchase and Sale Agreement.
I'm sorry, I went back up on yes. Thank you. Thank you. Questions, Warren?
The annexation agreement is basically the same annexation agreement it was four years ago with a few changes for the.
Yes, yeah, it's, it, we changed two small paragraphs.
So I'd move to approve the Landmark Place Annexation Agreement, file number 0003-2019, as amended.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I would move to approve the Rose of Sharon Purchase and Sale Agreement and direct staff to bring back. Would it be an ordinance?
No, you wouldn't need to have anything brought back. We'll just hold on to the PSA until we receive that exhibit prior to signing it.
I would move to approve the Rose of Sharon Purchase and Sale Agreement.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Shove?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Warren. Next item up is the Purchase Agreement with SWS Equipment for a CCTV Camera Truck.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Borple, Utilities Manager. My next item is a contract with SWS Equipment for a closed-circuit television camera truck purchase to be used by the Collections Group of the Water Reclamation Division. Purpose of a closed-circuit CCTV camera truck is it allows for inspection of our sewer collection system without having to physically enter the system, not having to send staff down in there. It allows for a robotically operated camera to navigate the collection system, send back real-time images, it can tell a slope, and give us a, a good status update of, of how the collection system is looking. So it can help identify problems within the system before they surface, pun intended. And it will allow us to accurately inventory the system that can be incorporated into our geographic information system. In the lab, we can study what a belly in a sewer looks like and how solids build up in that belly. That's easy to do in the lab. There's no real way to do that in the field without a system like this, aside from, I guess, digging it up. So some basics of what a CCTV camera truck is, you basically start with a box truck or a conversion van. And then they equip out the, the back of that, basically a full mobile workstation. The camera equipment is kind of placed on the back left there in a working area further in the truck. And what this allows for is staff, once again, we don't have to send them down into the sewer system. They're much more comfortable sitting in the back of this workstation. We envision a lot of this work getting done, especially the inventory in the winter. We have a lot of summer demands, we have stormwater work that may be a little bit less in the winter. This is a good fill-in activity, so we can really start to inventory the system in the winter. This allows that work to get done in the, in the back of the box truck. For us, the box truck was a more economical option, so we're going with that. I think there's a lot of demand for vans, is my guess. Still seems to be a lot of demand for vans, so we're going with the box truck design in this proposal. The financial, the financials of this, they are not inexpensive pieces of equipment. So all together, out the door, this is the, the frame chassis, fully equipping our, our camera equipment, $249,586.67 funded through New Vehicles Equipment Budget. This is an item that we have built budget for, for the last several years in anticipation of this purchase. So we've been, been planning for this for a couple of years, utilize source well contracting. Legal group has reviewed that contract to ensure it conforms with legal practices. And again, gets back to allowing for safe and a thorough evaluation of our system. We do have some existing equipment. It utilizes the latest in VHS technology. So we're really hoping to jump a couple generations ahead with, with this system that's being proposed. Questions on this item?
Questions, Craig?
I think beyond, you know, it's not just a comfort issue for not having to send people down to the, to the lines, but most of the lines aren't physically big enough to get a person down anyway. So there's often quite distance between access points, and so right now, we just can't even really see if there is a problem between access points, right?
Correct.
So $249,000, it sounds like a lot of, was it 47?
49.
49. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of money, but how many problems have to bubble to the surface, so to speak, to burn through that, fixing it? And where we could avoid that by detecting it in the first place, so I think it's a really good use of, of money and will save a whole lot of money in the long run.
I agree.
Well, I'd make a motion, this would be done, make a motion to approve the purchase agreement for SWS Equipment for a CCTV camera truck.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And the final item under new business tonight, which is not an action item, is the I-90 Corridor Study Workshop Recap and Letter of Support Consideration.
A question before we get started. We're not considering the letter of support tonight, correct?
No, if you wanted us to bring back one, we'd bring it back as an action item at the next council meeting or a future council meeting.
So we would be asking for consideration, but not necessarily action at this meeting, so just for council's discussion of that. So Mayor and Council, we just wanted to provide a recap of the workshop that we'd had a while ago. There was a workshop that was presented by ITD's consultant relative to the I-90 Corridor Study. They presented the two existing options that were available then. At the time, we were, we were requesting consideration of a, of a letter from the mayor indicating a preferred option for that. We were requested to bring that back. There's been a lot of questions that have kind of arisen since then. So we took it, took another draft of that letter. It was in your packet this evening, but we're not asking for approval tonight. So if, if, if it is something that council, after their discussion and debate, want to move forward, we'd bring it back forward in, under a consent agenda item or another format that we would this evening, so. Real briefly, on the timeline of the project, this is a 10 to 20-year funding and construction project to widen the I-90. Currently, they're working on, ITD is working on the eastern portion of the project through Coeur d'Alene. Once they have funding for the City of Post Falls portion of it, they would then have to go back through, reanalyze, and, and take a look at the study. So we currently have the two options that were before us. When they come back again, there could, they'll have to take another look at that again. There could be another option that they present, that come towards us. So right now, funding is unknown from ITD, so they'll, they'll have to come back again once forward with us. They'll have to go back through the public open house process, take public input, and we'll have to additional workshops with Mayor and Council as well during that time. We kind of wanted to run through just a recap of what those two alternatives were. I was going to let Rob go ahead and go that, just a reminder here, like I say, timing and funding to complete the design alternative analysis is currently undetermined. So it could be five years, it could be 10 years.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. So I'm going to summarize the workshop that you had a month ago and the information that's given at the public workshop about two months ago. ITD presented to you via their consultant, David Evans, an associate last month, the two preferred alternatives, Alternative B and Alternative C. Both of those alternatives meet the scope and purpose of ITD for the needs of I-90 through the year 2045. That means they address operations on I-90 to move traffic through the area at what ITD considers to be an acceptable level of service during the PM hour. And that the improvements that they are proposing, which would include the interstate and those road improvements on the city system that are shown, would not degrade the City of Post Falls system below a level of service D, which is the city's standard. Both of these options also address what the City of Post Falls has within their transportation master plan and their impact fee capital plan of what's called the Celtae Way Focused Corridor. That means based upon the information that ITD has and their modeling, it looks like we could get rid of what had been proposed as a one-way couplet on Celtae and Mullen Avenue and open up some other potential opportunities for road diets in that area. Part of our current transportation master plan would be looking at both of these options, B and C in greater detail, and also looking at what opportunities there are for us within our own road system to meet long-term needs for capacity. Option B is a collector-distributor roadway. I'm giving you a quick picture of a collector-distributor roadway. For Alternative B, it means that I-90 would have three lanes in each direction and that a separate collector-distributor roadway would be off to the side and it would be separated from the main line, probably by some vertical grade separation as well as a, a vertical wall of some type, Jersey Ferry or et cetera. How that would work is traffic that wants to get off at any of the exits in the City of Post Falls, being Spokane Street, Idaho Street, or Sarinca, would get off, if they were coming from the Spokane side, they would get off onto a marked area that's a City of Post Falls exits and maybe list those by name. And then they would get onto that roadway and that collector-distributor would operate at around 55 miles per hour, maybe a smaller speed limit or higher. But normally, they're around the 55 mile per hour speed limit range. There are two lanes, so you have one lane which allows people to go through and keep up speed and then one on the right, which is where people merge on and off. And then when you get to the far end, in this case, which would be over by Sarinca Street, is where traffic would come from that collector-distributor and back onto the main line 70 mile per hour traffic. Coming from Coeur d'Alene, it'd be the exact opposite where traffic wanting to get off in the downtown core would get off at the Sarinca area and they would utilize that collector-distributor to get off at Sarinca, Idaho Street, or Spokane Street. With Alternative B, there are, or there will be three interchanges. We have the existing interchange at Spokane Street. It remains essentially unchanged, a little bit of widening under there in the larger structure. It will probably do away with the water features that are there. The collector-distributor would also add a brand-new full interchange at Idaho Street. And then the existing overpass of Celtae Way over I-90 would go away and be replaced with a new full interchange about at the back of Yolks, and that would be the Sarinca Street connection. Now, all that would require connectivity, in this case, Celtae Way would be realigned to line up with Polston, and that would run traffic east-west. And then Fourth Avenue would be connected up with Celtae Way near the location of Bay Street for traffic running east-west on the south. Based upon traffic patterns in that area, the anticipation is that area in the downtown area, both Celtae Way on the north and Celtae slash Fourth Avenue on the south would be 25 mile per hour roadways due to the number of traffic signals and the amount of traffic that's being projected for the year 2045. In terms of right-of-way impact, just to cover some of the large issues on here, there are, there's a lot more impacts to right-of-way on Alternative B than C. Up in the area of Idaho Street and Celtae Way slash Polston, there are very likely to be full acquisitions of properties, including the Post Falls Club, the Napa Store. There's a business complex over there as well as a bar that are also likely to be full acquisitions. There's also other, a number of other smaller acquisitions, which could be anywhere from a few hundred square feet to larger amounts or even something as small as a right-of-entry, just so that they can build the improvements but not, and go onto the private property while they're building those improvements. And that could affect a Mountain West Bank, a Big Bear Deli, Walgreens. Over at the intersection of Polston and Sarinca, minor acquisitions are anticipated in there, though no full acquisitions are anticipated by ITD at this time. That could impact Kootenay Health, Dickinson Insurance, and I think that was it in that corner. Down at the intersection of Fourth Avenue, Celtae Way, and Sarinca, there would be minor right-of-way acquisitions needed in order to get the collector-distributor in place over along the north side of Yolks and some minor acquisitions over in the corner by Yolks at the intersection as well. Over at Idaho and Fourth Avenue, there would be some larger acquisitions with the Kootenay Fire and Rescue and with the Immaculate Conception Church. And then back at Spokane Street and the interstate, there's anticipated to be other additional minor acquisitions to possibly major acquisitions with the City of Post Falls parking lot here at City Hall and impacts to the Arboretum. Alternative C is a auxiliary lane construction. And what an auxiliary lane construction does is you still have three lanes of traffic in both directions, but you add a fourth lane in that area between Spokane Street and Greens Ferry Road. And that would be the lane where people would come off the off-ramps or come off the on-ramps and/or be in to get onto the off-ramps. And they would utilize that to slow down or do their merging and get up to speed before they came onto the main line 70 mile per hour traffic. Alternative C has less impacts to property in the area. There is still a anticipated acquisition of the Terra Coffee location and then there's minor acquisitions along Spokane Street from Seventh Avenue down to City Hall. And again, anticipated impacts to the City Hall parking lot and impacts to the city's arboretum as well. Alternative B has an estimated cost of about $200 million. Alternative C has an estimated cost, and all of these are planning level costs right now. They haven't gone through and refined ideas, but Alternative C is at about $175 million, so about $20, $25 million difference between the two. One of the advantages to Alternative B is that it does distribute traffic more through the City of Post Falls system. Instead of having two full off-ramps, which Alternative C has, you have three. A lot of the traffic in this area that gets off of I-90 is heading to the north and northeast. This gives traffic a opportunity to go to Idaho Street to head north or to Sarinca Street to head north, which preserves capacity in the area around Celtae Way and Spokane Street. Alternative B at the 2045 buildout is anticipated to still have remaining capacity on the freeway. It, depending upon how growth occurs, it could be really close to being at capacity, but current modeling shows that there is a remaining capacity, but how much further beyond 2045, that hasn't been determined. Alternative C is anticipated that by the year 2045, at the current growth rates that are projected, that Alternative C will be either at or very near full capacity and needing to have further improvements done to I-90 and possibly city improvements as well. At this point, city staff has a preference towards Alternative B. Some of the main reasons for that is traffic distribution. We have a larger area that we're distributing that traffic out so that it can move north and, north and south. There's less impact on Spokane Street, even though there is a greater impact to other businesses over in the Spokane, excuse me, in the Idaho and Celtae area. But Alternative B does have a larger resiliency, which is it will last longer and there'll be a larger return on investment, possibly for the city, but definitely. be a larger return on investment, possibly for the city, but definitely for ITD as well. And this again shows where the major changes are with alternative B. You've got the two new, you have the new rampant Idaho, maintaining the interchange at Spokane Street, removing the half-change at Seltis Way, the new interchange at Sarinca Street, and then the realignment of Seltis Way. At this point, do you have any questions on the fairly quick summary of what the two alternatives do?
Okay. I'll turn it back over to Bill.
Real brief summary again, you know, both alternatives do meet ITD's goal to meet the 2045 traffic volumes, capacity needs, maintain travel time, and improve safety, reducing collisions within the corridor. Option B is more expensive, by about $25 million, than C, but option B has a longer life. It's more resilient. It's anticipated to last longer than them, so while it's more expensive upfront, there's less improvements that might have to be done at the end of that term period. Option B also provides more access and traffic distribution within Post Falls, spreads traffic out. That's got potential of reducing costs long-term as we're trying to maintain our systems as opposed to currently trying to run all the traffic that, the majority of traffic that we have coming through, a lot of the community through Spokane Street. Project funding to complete the study, design, and construction, as we've mentioned earlier, is currently not available. Will require reexamination of traffic projections and alternative impacts depending upon when funding does come forward. Both alternatives appear to remove the Seltis Focus Corridor Study from our capital improvement program, which is currently held in there around $18 million, so there's some benefits to the city with some cost reductions through either of those with that. And that is something we will have our consultant take a much harder look at when we update our transportation master plan. They do have impacts to adjoining properties. As Rob had mentioned, four possible full acquisitions. With alternative B, 26 total parcels with possible impacts, which could be parking, a little bit of frontage or whatever. Obviously, with alternative C, they're currently showing one possible full acquisition and then 10 parcels with potential other impacts that they would have with them. So, less impact to some of the existing businesses, which is a serious consideration. We've spoken with ITD relative to costs and cost sharing. They have indicated that they're responsible for costs to meet the purpose and need of the project for their preferred option. That includes property acquisition and mitigation of impacts associated with that. If the city wanted other things added to the project, we could negotiate costs for things that are, would be beyond what they consider to be purpose and need. Currently unknown, we haven't set out and said what's what. I think we're way premature on doing that, so that's really where we are there. We had presented a letter within the packet for consideration, if it was something that council wanted us to return with for that. We think that that letter could help them with funding, show city support, could help them maybe move funding a little quickly. It also showed some of the reasons why we preferred one of the options over the other, and that was, you know, the distribution of traffic and some of those items that we had previously mentioned. So, with that, we can maybe let council have discussion amongst themselves and decide if do we want to issue a letter and come back forward with one, and if so, how would we want to change maybe the existing letter that was presented before you.
Questions, comments?
So, the purpose and need, does that mean if the estimated cost of option B is $200 million, that ITD is going to pay $200 million?
That is what, that is what they're saying, in, you know, within that range. As we've gone through with some of the things we have with like Highway 41 widening and the new interchange where we've, we maybe share some traffic signals that are out and there, we've shared costs for a new signal based on the number of lanes and some things like that. We're really, it's really premature at this point. They haven't laid it all out through that, but they are sharing what they are calling the majority of all of those costs is with that. We, you know, we went then with that. This is, Seltis Way through this whole section through there, including Spokane, is a part of the I-90 business loop. It's their jurisdiction for a great majority of this.
I guess part of my concern is that there's so much that is still yet, as yet unknown. This did a lot to clarify a lot of things. I really appreciate the work that, that went into this, but there's, you know, we may not get any kind of, I say we, ITD may not have any idea what their funding may be for, you said up to five years.
Right.
A lot could change between now and then. Yeah, option B is clearly the better option in terms of overall traffic flow. That's also clearly the much more disruptive and much more expensive option, and if ITD is picking up the majority of the purpose and need, I mean technically majority is 51%, right? So, I know it's going to be more than that.
Right.
I'm exaggerating, but I feel like at this time, this is me personally, that, that we might still be a little bit ahead of, of, you know, endorsing a particular option, particularly also too, we've got two new counselors coming on in a couple of weeks that I don't know how much they've had a chance to look at this. There may be a new mayor, an entire new council by the time any funding is even available. So, I think it might be a little bit early in the process to endorse one, one option or another.
So, what, what we have done with the most recent letter was try to soften it a bit, was saying why we're not committing funding, that our, our current leaning was towards option B because of these things, because of the traffic distribution and some of those other items within there, you know, less impact on the Spokane Street area. So, we tried to soften that, but at this point, as we had discussed with, you know, legal counsel and Warren at the last meeting, really was going to leave it up for council's debate as to whether they wanted to issue a letter or not. And so, we'd, we'd propose one that we thought was a little bit softer, but it's up to council whether, you know, whether they wanted to or not. Like we said, we think there's a potential that helps provide support, advance funding, say, why do we like one option, so maybe as they look at future alternatives in the future, they say, okay, let's look at this distribution of traffic, yeah, if we go through there. But if they only get funding to do one of the options, and, and that is C, and they don't have funding for B, well, we'll have to have some real serious discussions about, is that, is that what we go with at this point, and then we'll deal with something else years down the road.
Okay. Nathan?
As far as issuance of the letter of recommendation, is not yet an option?
We, we, we did issue a letter and it, it should have been in the packet that spoke to, our current leaning was towards a preference of option.
Right, but as far as submitting to ITD, it's not done? What would be the timeframe then if, if we had you bring it forward at another meeting and then approved it?
Whenever, whenever you were comfortable with it, if you wanted to wait till they received funding and we had additional workshops and then provide a stronger support at that time, that would be available as well. It is crucial, but we think it helps advance funding.
Another thing on that too is that, by memory serves me in the workshop, the public feedback, option C was actually the preferred option based on the public feedback, correct?
Yeah, and I can't remember the numbers. They weren't huge.
Right.
For the community. We did have some of the local businesses there, including some of those that were impacted, that, that were at those meetings, they had individual meetings with some of those folks, and there, there wasn't a lot of pushback at that point from some of them.
Well, I remember asking the question that if option B is more efficient, why was option C preferred? So, you know, there's, there's an optics issue there that if the majority of the very few people that showed up to the public meeting preferred option C, and then we turn around and recommend option B, then it kind of looks like we're not listening. So, maybe additional public input would be a good thing, and if it, if it keeps pushing towards option C, or maybe with, with more, this is, again, this is a clearer explanation than we got before, maybe that, that public support will drift more towards option B.
So, maybe that is something that we go back to ITD and tell them, if council feels that way, that there hasn't been enough public input, or maybe it hasn't been clear enough and we think there needs to be more public interaction and engagement with it. That's an option that we can do that too.
So, a letter will be coming down the road? We would, we will not issue a letter until down the road, basically is what you'd be telling?
That would be council's, it's council's deliberation and, and direction on that. We could, we could issue a letter now, or we could wait till they're, till we do have funding and do it down the road.
I agree, Joe. I think that's a little premature to, I think we wait, bring it down the road.
I would just say that for ITD to move things ahead, to even look at funding, they're going to have to be fairly locked into one plan or another. So, you know, the way the funding works, they're getting a lot of their money from the Federal Highway Administration, and so they need to pretty much have things locked down before they apply for that funding, or they aren't going to get it. And then the, the other thing that comes along with that is that the closer you are to having your plans ready to go, if there's 100 projects on the bar, or on the board, but 50 of them aren't ready to go and the other 50 are, if, depending on where the priorities lie, if these aren't ready to go and these are, you're going to get the money over here instead of over there. So, there's some impacts there to take a look at.
May I suggest, sorry?
How, how fast they plan on trying to get this funding, that's probably the biggest question right now is.
Charlie?
May I suggest that we bring this back either in February or March for further discussion and more information to be provided, and then our new two council members would also have an opportunity to speak to the letter. Would that be good with staff and council?
So moved?
We need, we didn't need a motion.
It's a non-action item, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We could bring it back. Is there additional information that you would like for staff to work with ITD on, some clarification on some items?
For me, is, is, is the problem is going to be that nobody's got a crystal ball, you know, who's, who's going to pay for what? And I know, I know those answers just aren't available right now. I think a workshop to include the two new counselors would be a, a good idea, so they can kind of get a rundown of what's going on too. And I don't know what point we might have more clarity as to who might pay for what. Is that five years from now? Is that a year from now? I know you can answer that question, but that's, that's one of the, that's why the smoke is rolling out of my ears.
And that is something that we could sit down with ITD and tell, and just be upfront with them, that we were looking at, we were discussing providing a letter of support to help them move this, advance this project, move it along a little bit, try to get some funding, but there's some concerns with this unknown, and then to have some frank discussions in a little bit more detail on funding. We had some phone conversations with, maybe we need to sit face-to-face and say, what about these items to get a better handle on it?
And it seems to me too, that they probably have a very strong incentive to go with option B also, because that means they don't have to be back in 2045 redesigning the whole thing. So, there probably is some leverage there that we don't have to, you know, give up the wallet, so to speak, to, to fund their preferred options, so.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Next item up on, next item up on the agenda tonight is citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address city council on a city issue that is not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to testify? Seen none. Administrator staff reports. I have two. The first is the Prairie Avenue Spokane Street project summary.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of council. The city for the past several years has been working on construction of improvements on Spokane Street, north of Poline Avenue, and along Prairie Avenue between Chase Road and Spokane Street. The project is now done, with the exception of some minor punch list items that are remaining. And the most recent phase of the project, which was Phase Two, had an awarded bid amount of 5.3 million, but it was completed at a cost of 3.28% under budget. Tonight, I want to review with you what has been accomplished with the city's $5 million investment on this area. So, a really quick recap, the northern half of it, north of Grange Avenue on Spokane Street. Phase One was constructed back in 2021 by Interstate Asphalt, and that involved railroad improvements at the UP Railroad Crossing. In 2022, we reconstructed the principal arterial of Prairie Avenue between Spokane Street and most of the way to Chase to a five-lane arterial that's part of our Impact Fee Project S-51. Also with our Impact Fee Project S-51, we constructed a multi-lane roundabout at Prairie and Spokane Street. Our initial view in the master plan showed that by the year 2025, it needed to be a single-lane roundabout, but by the year 2035, it would need to be a multi-lane roundabout. We re-analyzed that prior to going to construction. We also looked at whether or not that should have been a signal or a roundabout. It came back that a roundabout worked better and that within 10 years, yes, we would need to have a multi-lane roundabout, so it made more sense to spend the money now to put in a multi-lane roundabout than to put in a single lane and tear it out within 10 years. We also took Spokane Street and we chipped, crack sealed and chip sealed it for necessary maintenance work. Also on that northern half, we did a fair amount of sanitary sewer work for the Water Reclamation Department. They actually completed three portions of their master plan work. The first was to decommission the Prairie Falls Two lift station and the Grayling lift stations. By decommissioning these lift stations, they opened up additional capacity further to the south where the Prairie Falls Two lift station used to discharge, and they also provided a new 21-inch sewer main in Prairie Avenue, which opens up the opportunity for future development to the north and east of Prairie and Spokane Street, all the ways out to State Highway 41, and in a few locations even east of Highway 41. This 21-inch sewer line is a dry line at this time. It is waiting for the completion to be extended down to the Fisher Lift Station. Our Water Reclamation Department is currently in the design phase, and we are anticipating that the new Fisher Lift Station will be online by the end of 2025. On the south end of the project, we did another Impact Fee Project, and we ended up taking Spokane Street, which was in fairly rough condition. We rebuilt it still as a two-lane roadway. We added bike lanes, put in curb and gutter, sidewalk, and roadway illumination. We also did some waterline improvements in that area. Just as a reminder, Spokane Street north of Poline Avenue is a major collector roadway. This is what Spokane Street looked like earlier this year. By the end of this year, we brought to the standard here. Drives a lot nicer, doesn't have the potholes in it, and also it is a much safer roadway for people who live along there to back out. Typically, in a major collector roadway, we do have a two-way center turn lane that was not put in on this because we were really restrained with how to fit in the road improvements that we needed with a cemetery on the east and trailers on the west, which were really encroaching upon the roadway. So, we fit in the best thing that we could, and this will cover traffic well beyond the year 2035, which is our current master plan buildout area. This is the intersection of Prairie and Spokane Street. This is what it looked like two years ago. This is what it looks like now. Or if you want to take a look at it from an aerial view, will be of a change. I actually like this view a heck of a lot better. It's a massive improvement to that area, a lot more modern, a lot safer, it can handle a lot more traffic. This is actually what we are anticipating Prairie Avenue to look like from Meyer Road all the ways through the City of Post Falls in the buildout scenario. Maybe not as, not quite as much Center Island planters, but that worked really well in this situation. Here is Spokane Street on the west side of the project, looking east. Again, you can see that Prairie Avenue was in a failing condition. Projects for subdivisions on both the north side and south side of Prairie Avenue had cached out the road widening, curb gutter, and multi-use path and roadway illumination previously. This is what Prairie Avenue looks like now from that same location looking to the east. One thing I wanted to point out is at the intersection of Crown Point and Selti, not Seltis Way, Prairie Avenue, we did put in a turn prohibition. It's called a three-quarter turn. You're able to make a left turn off of Prairie into the subdivision. You're able to make a right turn into the subdivision off Prairie, but from Crown Point Road itself, you can only make a right turn out. The reason for that was to bring this area into conformance with the Kootenay Metropolitan Planning Organization's Critical Arterials Corridor Policy. These locations tend to have higher collision and accident rates, and by getting rid of the left turns out, it will provide a safer roadway long-term. In reality, we probably didn't need to put in that return restriction for five to 10 years. However, it was more cost-effective to put it in now, get people used to it than to get to the point where the safety has degraded so much that we then have to go in, cut a road that's only 10 years old, put it in. that we then have to go in, cut a road that's only 10 years old, put it in and then deal with people who are not obeying the signs. There is a little bit of that going on now, but that is being worked on. Project funding. This project completed three transportation impact fee projects, completed three water reclamation capital projects. We completed a water system upgrade on the south end and we completed necessary roadway maintenance on Spokane Street between Prairie Avenue and in the south end. Transportation impact fees. We expended or we had planned to spend 4.1 million dollars from transportation impact fees, about 675,000 from water reclamation, just under 100,000 from the water department and a couple hundred thousand dollars towards the chip sealing and the replacement of the center portion of Prairie Avenue. There was also developer cash out amounts provided for this project. They were not utilized in the construction phase. We utilized those dollars in the design phase of this project for phase one and two. The awarded contract amount was 5.36 million dollars. City Council approved the contract with an additional contingency amount of 5.8 million. When we started this project, we were just getting out of COVID. There were supply chain issues. We had issues where our 21-inch pipe, the original vendor could no longer provide it and the contractor had to search around the country. They found another source. It was about $12,000 more. They, excuse me, $24,000 more. They split the cost with us. We paid half of the additional cost. Contractor also worked with us on escalating prices for asphalt. Some of the biggest areas that we saw savings in this project was on masquerading and dirt. We were able to save some money in that the imports that we brought was from the Poline and Cecil Roundabout that we were working on at the same time. And that was able to save well over $100,000. Final cost of the project was 5.19 million dollars or basically 192,848 dollars under the original awarded contract price or 3.28% under budget. That doesn't happen very often and it's nice when everything comes together. This was not an easy project. I mentioned the sewer, the escalating prices. We had utility delays that cost us well over a month of time. And we had other issues on the project that occurred. We ended up with 15 change orders, so it wasn't a project where we had a nice, easy cakewalk. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have while I got a couple of aerial drone imagery just showing for your viewing pleasure.
Rob, nice job on this project. The good news is you brought it in under budget, 192,000. Bad news is you've set a precedent. So no pressure, but we'll look forward and see what you can do on future projects.
I'd like to see if I if we can do something better, it would be fun.
Yeah, you guys did a nice job on this and it is much easier to drag that off and you did a much, a very nice job on that project. So, council.
Is that the furthest under budget you've ever come on any project?
Yes.
And during COVID too, it was impressive.
Well, here, you win.
I'll give that after the city council meeting, counselor.
Give the prize for coming in under budget.
So if there aren't any other questions, I would just like to, in a project like this, just thank the contractor, La Riviera. They did work with us. There was give and take on both sides and we had a really good design team from J U B Engineers. It wouldn't have been possible without their help in managing this project. And also hats off to our staff, senior staff engineer Jim O'Kahy. This was one of his first real capital projects to run mainly on his home, so he did a good job of managing it. Thank you very much, council.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. Next item, Ponderosa Lift Station, project staff report.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Jackson Fleschman, project manager, City of Post Falls. And unfortunately, I will have to disappoint you because I did not come under budget like Rob did, so. I know it.
Tough act to follow, isn't he?
A tough act to follow. His slides also were, had cool animations to him, so. All right. So our Ponderosa Lift Station project has finally wrapped up. And bit project background to get you guys back familiar with it. This was originally constructed in 1985. In our 2018 collections master plan, it was identified as a high priority lift station that needed to be replaced. Some of the key items there, it was a low reliability station, high risk, no overflow storage was the big thing. And if you ask our operations staff, it was a day-to-day type of station before it was upgraded. Some of the continued background, that chart there on the right is actually directly from our 2018 master plan and shows all the lift stations in the city. The red ones are our regional lift stations and the one on the top right is our Ponderosa Lift Station. So speaking with our operations staff, it receives approximately a third of city flows, so a pretty, pretty good amount of city flows and at a low reliability station, that's not, not a good thing. So got that upgraded. And I, just in case there's any questions later, the the orange box is there. Those are temporary lift stations and those are all actually decommissioned now, so this is just an older chart. And a brief note, this will come, come back into play with our future 12th half force main project. That'll end up going straight to third versus going to Ponderosa. Bit of timeline, this project took maybe longer than some usual ones, but there were some factors there. So design began in March of 2020. And spring of 21, we elected to do a bitter pre-qualification. That took some time and there was also some design changes during that time. Bidding award happened through April of 2022. Strider Construction was the contractor on this project. Project kicked off on May of 22. We had a winter shutdown, December through April, and that was a direct impact of COVID and material delays. That's just more or less what that was, unfortunately. And we hit substantial completion as of September 2023. Fun stuff. Here's some photo for you guys, kind of go through them quickly. I know it's been a long council meeting here. Over there on the left, we got some of the very first things going on, cutting down some trees. The old late, old station is actually still in the back. Next two photos are some, some early on pictures of our emergency storage structure being poured and formed up, excavated, formed up. Some more pictures there, it's being framed up on the left, strip there in the middle. Picture on the right, our storage structure is actually way in the back and there's some, some more precast structures there in the front. A nice demo picture of the old station for everyone to look at on the left. And then wrapping up the project there on the right, you get some of the initial landscaping and you can see the the new building in the back that houses all our electrical equipment. Everyone's favorite stuff, budget summary. So our Dura's contract, the original contract came in at 345,000 and finished at 460. Big factors there. Only out of the four additional services that we had with our Dura, only one was actually during construction and it was because of that winter shutdown that extended kind of everything. Everything prior to that was actually pre-designed and things that we wanted done. So hats off to our Dura with that because there was a lot that kind of happened in that project and they were, they were good on their budget the whole time up until that that extension. And as for Strider Construction, in their contract, their original contract came in at just over 2.8 million and finished at three. And the large change order there was because of the the overhead and the scheduled delay for our winter shutdown, waiting for equipment to arrive. So just to talk, so the numbers aren't arbitrary arbitrary up there. For our Dura's contract, that came in under 20% of what the construction total cost was, which is a good benchmark we use to to determine if if we're within budget and and that was a good number to fall within. And then we did finish within our original contingency for Strider's contract. So we asked for a contingency of 10% and we finished within that. So overall, I think, good project with the difficulties that arose throughout it. Here's a nice before and after. So the station now is on the right, the previous station's on the left. Kind of tucked the station more back into the trees, bit more park space there. Kind of took them from the same angle so you can see how the station shifted over and overall the park looks nicer and I think it's an upgrade. Some lessons learned, maybe project specifics. Between this and a couple other projects, we actually took this and we're running with it currently with our Corbin Lift Station project of implementing a pre-procurement period for contractors to order in those long lead time items before construction starts. Saves us on consulting fees, saves us on a lot of things prior to beginning construction. And so far that is working out well for us. Strider Construction was a, a new contractor for us and we had some challenges throughout this project, especially with it being during COVID and there was a war and you name it, we had it. But also good on them because we, we worked through those things and we actually have a second project occurring right now, our Bentley Lift Station project, same contractor. And so far this, this Bentley project has gone significantly smoother. The relationship is there now, it's established, it's better. So the things that were built within our first, first project with Ponderosa have definitely bled over into that and overall worked out very well. And then, yeah, just challenging times, equipment delays, everything delays, so. Yeah, overall, I think a successful project. And we have a working station, that's the, that's the big thing there. Questions?
Thanks, Jackson. It's, it's nice to see these projects come to completion. You know, it's just so many of them, it just seems like it takes longer and longer, so to wrap these projects up is, is very nice. So appreciate your time and effort on that.
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor and council comments. I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. It does not appear as though it's going to be a white Christmas. But you know, they could write a song about, we wish you a gray Christmas as well, I guess. So if there's no snow on the road, it may not be slick, but it could still freeze, so please drive carefully. The littles will be out of school this week, I believe. And so depending on what the weather does, they will be out playing, drive carefully. At this point, this is the last full council meeting for Mr. Borders. Lynn, thank you for your time and effort, your contributions to the city and beyond. We look forward to seeing you in other capacities as you promised me. But again, thank you very much for all you've done. Carrie, the same to you. It's been a few years that we've served together and appreciate all you've done and.
You had hair and I was young.
I don't, no, I didn't have hair. So just clarify. But, but thank you again. Thank you also for all the contributions you've made, we appreciate it, so. And again, everybody, I wish you a very Merry Christmas. Council comments. Seen none, we do need an executive session.
We do. And I would move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation, litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated. Further, that no action will be taken and the session will last approximately 10 minutes.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll enter into executive session.
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll enter into executive session.[1177.25]